So call to order, it's 7:02 PM. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, hold on one second, please. That's not bad, right?
Yeah, beautiful.
Very good.
All right, a pledge of allegiance. To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Hey, that's sort of a testus to see whether you know the words or not. I love it. All right, next on, uh, next on the agenda, um, I have a statement from the governor. Consistent with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, and Regulation 940 CMR 29.10, which allows for the remote participation in certain circumstances under the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Regulations. The Mendon Upton Regional School Committee will be conducting this meeting remotely. In this particular case, all six members of the committee are participating remotely and virtually through video conferencing. This is consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 10, 2020, which ease the requirements of having a meeting in a physical space open to the public and having a quorum of the community president, physically present. Any and all votes will be conducted by roll call. Per usual, this meeting will also be livestreamed and recorded. So with that, we have some approvals. We have agenda approval, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor approving the agenda.
Lee Martin, I.
Carrie Lawrence, I.
Sean Nichols, I.
Bill Zetter, I.
Nikki Ludwigson, I.
Okay, very good. Agenda approved. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the open session of April 6, 2020.
Motion to approve the open session minutes of April 6, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor, Sean Nichols, I.
Lee Martin, I.
Carrie Lawrence, I.
Bill Zetter, I.
Nikki Ludwigson, I.
Okay, very good. Moving on to a motion for the approval of the minutes of the executive session of April 6.
I move that we approve the executive session minutes of April 6, 2020.
Second.
Uh, very good, all those in favor say aye, Sean Nichols, I.
Lee Martin, I.
Carrie Lawrence, I.
Bill Zetter, I.
Nikki Ludwigson, I.
All right, very good, let's move to the superintendent's comments.
All right, uh, good evening, everybody. First, um, you have in, for the committee, you have in your packet, the, uh, most recent guidance that came from the commissioner very late last Friday evening. It's kind of in direct response in knowing that, um, the governor was going to be closing all K through 12 schools across the Commonwealth for the remainder of this school year. As I note in the background notes that, um, the guidance, I, I don't think in, in many ways has a lot of significant implications for the MURSD for the simple reason that many of the things that are detailed are things that we've already been doing and have kind of been the priority of, uh, our remote learning plan. I think the key thing is, um, being very explicit about teaching new content to all students. Uh, and specifically, I didn't include in your packet, but what was included in this guidance document was detailing of what the key priority standard should be at every single grade level. An elementary and a secondary document. Uh, and sometimes they're referred to as power standards. You know, what are the real essential learnings that kids need to know? So, uh, the guidance really talks about, you know, again, social emotional learning being a priority and, you know, prioritizing meaningful connections amongst teachers and their students. But really, the second piece is focusing on core instruction that really gets at the heart of those power standards. Um, and then the other pieces around, again, ensuring that kids have opportunities to be outdoors and have enrichment, and that's embedded into the curriculum and particularly in the elective or specialist curriculum. And to ensure that programming is accessible, insecure, and that we're constantly communicating with our students and our families. A little bit later in this meeting, I'm going to talk about the survey results from the survey that we put out last week. I, I think you're going to find like I did that we have some very, very positive feedback from all of our stakeholders. It doesn't mean that we have other things that we, uh, need to tweak and prioritize. But, um, I think this guidance is also affirming of the work and the remote learning plan that we've put in place in the MURSD, but I share that with you. You know, for, for your knowledge and, um, in meetings with the commissioner, uh, with all the superintendents, there will be additional guidance that comes out later in this, uh, spring that specifically addresses reentry and what, um, face-to-face instruction may look like as we return in September. So I'll be sure to share that with you as that, um, is issued. Second piece I have is, and I've been receiving a lot of, uh, questions and inquiries about this, is what, uh, are we planning to do with regard to graduation and some of the traditional end-of-year celebrations? Right before this past vacation, John and Mary Ann put out a form to seniors and their parents to ask them to share, uh, ideas that they had to celebrate the class of 2020. And, uh, I'm sure some of you, I'll, again, I'm going to just do a very quick screen share. Have seen this, uh, at many area schools are going to this, if I can call this up quickly. But very shortly, we will be disseminating, um, yard signs like you can see on the screen that say that, uh, student living in the house is a proud member of the NIPMA class of 2020. So, um, many thanks to John and Mary Ann for in very short order, uh, putting that together. But the long and short of, uh, some of the initial feedback from the forum that they put out was that there remains an intense interest to have some type of a live event for our graduation. Um, I know some schools are looking at doing some, at some type of virtual graduation ceremony. Basically picture a massive Zoom, uh, type room, but it would also be customized so students could do, um, you know, there could be performances, there could be speeches and so on. But again, I think the mindset at this juncture is to look at, um, a live event. In all likelihood, would have to be postponed till the summertime or possibly the fall based upon wherever the governor is going to fall with regard to social distancing, uh, guidance. Keep in mind that also we've had a lot of inquiries, and I know John and Mary Ann, about the possibility of using the Mendon Drive-In. Um, you know, I probably you've seen it pitched on social media as well. We've actually looked into it and John and Mary Ann have inquired. Right now, there seems to be a certain difficulty with regard to, um, some of the parameters that the owners of the drive-in have put in. Good news is it could hold 300 cars, which still could be logistically challenging. The rental fee is $3,000, however, they're refusing to do it at night. And we couldn't use the screen. So if you think about, you know, yes, I understand the idea of, well, you know, it's making the best of a really challenging situation and we could still obey, you know, social distancing. To me, the vision would be, okay, if we were going to do that, again, a big if, it would have to be in the evening and you would want some type of full-fledged presentation up on the screen that our students and their families could, uh, recognize. So right now, that doesn't exactly seem to be a very viable, uh, alternative. So I think, uh, John and Mary Ann's approach is going to be to, um, as I say in the background note, they are planning a meeting, a Zoom session with the seniors and their parents for tomorrow to get some additional feedback and some additional brainstorming about graduation, but also about some of the traditional senior week activities as well. They're very, very eager to be able to celebrate and announce, for example, the students that have, um, earned scholarships and the thing, you know, the various awards and so on that we do typically for the end of the school year. John and Mary Ann, I don't know if you're present, I think you are. I, I don't know if either one of you guys, yeah, there you are, hi. Would like to add anything?
Uh, I would just say that we're really committed to making sure it reflects the wishes of the kids and the parents. This is their, this is their time. We just, we noticed that, uh, this time impacts everybody, but especially our seniors who had so much that they were looking forward to. So tomorrow, we are meeting with, uh, class officers and advisors in order to have that conversation. And then we're going to put together, as Joe was saying, um, some open forums for people to contribute their thoughts, but also have a survey go out to families so that we can make sure we're finding solutions and alternative plans that really reflect everybody's wishes. Mary Ann, anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, we just said too, the ideas that people have been sharing on the forum have been great. And I think, you know, the communities are approaching in a variety of ways. And, you know, we're not going to be able to make finalized plans, obviously, until we get additional guidance from the governor. But, um, I think we have a good jump on some things that could make it special and memorable for our students.
We're spending a lot of time to talking with other principals about this. We had our league principal meeting, we have one weekly now. And we talked about what other schools in the league are doing. And then also have been connecting with about, I would say it's about 20 or so Metro West schools to get a sense of how they're going to be celebrating senior events. Feels like everyone's in a similar spot to where we are, reaching out, getting sort of, sort of taking the temperature of their community and figuring out what people want and then customizing it to each community. But, um, we, as, as you said, Joe, we're really committed to making sure that this is a special time, as special as possible for these kiddos. They deserve it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Next, I just would like to, uh, really acknowledge the work of our food services director, Diane Mucci. I sent out a blast, an email blast today, and also a little something on social media about, um, the work that she's done literally since the very first day that we haven't been together physically, March 16. This first was started with the grab and go lunches, uh, for our students. And after doing that over a period of three weeks, it kind of morphed into something different. She was finding, based upon feedback and, and talking to some of the families, that were coming for the grab and go lunches for their students, that would be a little bit easier to provide a week's day of, uh, items. And it kind of morphed into lunch and to breakfast items as well. So, uh, what she's basically doing, along with a couple of her staff members, is putting together kind of these, uh, food boxes or, you know, kind of care packages, for lack of better, uh, word, that have a week's, uh, worth of assorted lunch and breakfast, but also healthy snack options for students. Um, and I think I shared with you in the packet kind of her numbers as far as the number of meals that have been produced and shared over the last three weeks. She loves doing it. Again, they are reimbursable through the federal school lunch program. Um, and then also, to be very honest, um, there's also a reality of she's great with regard to ordering and finding deals and, um, we still have some very good inventory in our food services program across all four schools. So we're kind of doing more of an all-call. You know, realize we don't have very, very large numbers, uh, in the district with regard to free and reduced lunch, but we really want to access our families and let them know. And as always, this program isn't, you know, we'd like to be able to identify and, and reach out specifically to our free and reduced lunch families. However, this is open to any family that has any need whatsoever. So, um, again, I, I, I think it's a terrific program. I really would like to recognize Diane Mucci and, um, her staff that have really stepped up and provided this need. Okay?
Excellent.
And then, uh, last, um, I think this is a conversation that I think we should start tonight. And, um, I think tentatively, we're looking at Thursday evening. Again, I, I really want to say in the PDC, I guess that's not happening via Zoom. Uh, we're looking at, uh, a multi-board meeting to talk about, uh, some of the financial updates and the outlook for this coming year FY21 budget. I know we've just started to talk about some of the issues, uh, that we're looking at, but I think we have to start rethinking the operational budget in light of the, the reality, uh, that we're in due to, uh, the COVID crisis. I think there's still unfortunately a great deal of uncertainty, but I think something that is certain is there is going to be a, a fairly significant shortfall in revenue. The week before vacation, myself and Jay had the opportunity to catch a, um, streaming of a session that was done at the state house that was kind of a round robin think tank with both the House and the Senate Ways and Means Committees, with the treasurer and, uh, some of the officials from DOR. And kind of talking about what are we looking at as far as a shortfall in revenue for the state budget? And at present time, uh, it's estimated to be between three to five billion. And there's actually some estimates that it would be upwards of six billion. I think with that type of shortfall, we're definitely looking at a reduction. Definitely in regional transportation reimbursement funding. But quite possibly Chapter 70 funding, maybe our best-case scenario would be keeping it level of where it was at F, uh, for this current FY20. So I think we've got that reality. I think we also have the reality of how this crisis is impacting, uh, our, uh, everybody, our families, our community members in both Mendon and Upton. And what is the viability of an override on the magnitude that we certified the budget back on March 9? So I think we're starting to look at all creative solutions. One being, what are some potential savings, uh, that we might be able to realize this fiscal year that we could roll into the FY21 budget? With that said, and I'm, I'm sure as committee members, uh, you're, you're cognizant of this. I think we can find some savings, but keep in mind, like most school districts, 80 to 85% of our total budget is really in our people. It's in salaries and it's also in benefits. So also keep in mind, we have not laid off a single person in our school district. So those things are stayed, those have stayed intact. So the amount of areas, uh, where we could find some savings are going to be, uh, a challenge. I think there are some opportunities and I'm going to ask you, Jay, to talk a little bit about it. I think in your packet, you have, um, a handout with some, at this juncture, some rough estimates of where we could find some potential savings. So Jay, could you talk a little bit, um, about some of the work that's ongoing right now and what your thinking is, uh, in some of these areas?
Sure, thanks. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all tonight. So I put together a list and I don't really want to discuss specific, like this one is this and this is what it adds up to. I would tell you that unlike my usual nature, this is more of a glass half-full approach than a glass half-empty approach. I tried to take more optimistic views, so I don't know that it will all come to fruition or not. Certainly, you know, we're going to save on some supply costs and money that wasn't spent as of now because we're not buying anything else unless we absolutely have to for online learning. Um, I'm happy to report that our snow removal budget's going to visit, finish on the positive. I know that's always a riveting part of my reports. We're going to save a little bit on heat, uh, because we turn the heat way down as soon as we close school in March. So we should save a little bit there. Other than that, we are still negotiating transportation costs with both Telstone and Sons and our out-of-district, Telsta, our out-of-district, uh, transportation providers. Because of that, I don't want to talk about the specifics of what's in there, but I'm, potentially there will be some savings there. We have to keep in mind though, that if we don't spend it on transportation, at least to and from school this year, we will not get reimbursed for it next year. So it's going to hit us on the other end. So anything we say potentially has to cover that cost next year. Um, and then there's a variety of other accounts that, you know, potentially there should be limited savings here or there. It's not like we're going to rake in tons and tons of money, but I do think we have the potential to save something that we can then roll into next year so that we can hopefully offset some of the costs that we were incurring with a fairly substantial override that I think we're looking to try to do something about.
Does anybody have any questions?
I know it's an unfair question, Jay, but, um, how, how much if you were, if you were going to predict how much your number would be off? You've got about roughly, you know, roughly a million dollars totaled up there? You'd say in 50% off, or do you think that's a good guess or a glass half? Or half-full is, how, how full is it?
So what I haven't looked at is what are we still getting for bills coming in other than, say, utility costs and things like that? I would tell you that probably my margin of error is about 30%. I'm hoping it's not any worse than that. But I think it could be as high as that. I, every year, it's really hard at this time of the year to predict where these accounts are going to end up because it's still so early. I mean, we really still have, you know, what, two, two and a half months left in the fiscal year. But certain costs have basically should be like reduced at this point. But I would say, yeah, the 30% range is probably my margin of error.
So there's some favorable pieces as well with regard to, um, we have, um, and Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, we have locked into our oil expenses for a dollar 67 a gallon.
Correct, for next year.
For next year.
Right.
Which is a nice little savings there versus what we budgeted in our original FY21 budget. Um, and again, without getting into the, some of the specifics, we're in a situation where we're in a negotiation, um, with Telstone and Sun. And one of the non-negotiables is looking at what our rate is going to be for next year. And one of our non-negotiables, at a minimum, our floor, our starting point is it has to be frozen at this year's rate. And, you know, all of you, you've been to either school committee, my budget presentations or budget subcommittee meetings where we've talked about some of the frustrations of that increase. And just that increase alone from FY20 to FY21 was a magnitude of about $150,000 for that 7% increase. So there's going to be a lot of, uh, areas. Again, it's not going to be this massive amount that we're saving from FY20 to roll into FY21, but we're looking to save on every angle. We're looking on the FY20 part of the ledger, but also FY21 of where are places that we could save versus that original certified budget. To kind of close a gap, so to speak.
I also, I think we're going to see this is not going to just play out with the end of this year and into next year, but it's going to play out into FY22 as well. Both on transportation reimbursement, circuit breaker, which we're going to be good for next year because we're a year ahead on that. So what we get in this year is what we're going to use for next year. But next year's circuit breaker may not be reimbursed at the same amount, which is going to affect us in FY22. So I think it's a long range, we've got some real challenges ahead of us. So we're trying to take one step at a time to see if we can get there.
Anything else? Okay, that's what I've got.
Sean. Okay, let's, let's move on to old business. The memorandum of agreement with the teachers, custodians, and administrative assistants in the associations.
Well, you have in your packet, uh, the MOA that was approved, uh, in executive session. You know, just generally speaking, uh, as far as a high-level overview, it is a memorandum of agreement that is highly aligned with the terms of the MURSD Remote Learning Plan as far as talking about, um, kind of the conditions of, uh, employment and, uh, working conditions, but it also explicitly states that, uh, the employees in those three bargaining units will be kept hold during, uh, the time of closure. I'm pleased that we are using all of our employees. And, um, again, I think this is an MOA that serves both sides very, very well.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, um, that, um, we're obviously pretty, um, pretty grateful for having, uh, Teachers Association that can work with us and, and all the associations as well, uh, in this very trying time. So we're very appreciative of them. Okay, so let's move on to, uh, new business. The results of the MERSD survey on remote learning.
Okay. I'm going to do a share again, my third and final time. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to go to, uh, this should be in your packet. Can everybody see it, uh, as far as the screen share? Yes?
Yep.
Okay, great. So we had the opportunity, I believe, over a period of four days to, uh, survey parents, staff members, and students. We did remarkably well, uh, with our parents. We sent it out to approximately 2,200 email addresses of parents. And you can see the response, 1,300 parents approximately, 175 staff members out of about 230. Our students was a, um, not, I, I, I mean, I think 330 is a decent population size. It's a, a little bit low. And, you know, I think the challenging thing was the, the avenue which it was shared with them was email. Um, and I think some of our students, and I think that's kind of a generational thing, just don't check their email. So it really, uh, the, the, we tried our absolute best to create a survey that was parallel so that, uh, parents, staff members, and students were kind of generally asked the same questions. There were a few variations here and there. But by and large, what you'll find is there was a lot of convergence in how different stakeholder groups answered some of these questions. So I'm going to try to not make this death by PowerPoint. I'm going to go through these relatively quickly. Uh, and if somebody has a question, please interrupt me. So first series of questions is real simple around communication. Asking parents, hey, are your child's teachers communicating with you on an ongoing basis? So you know what's happening and what's expected. So you can see in total about 89% of our parents either agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. As far as students, it's almost identical. About 89% of students agreed with the same exact statement, my teachers are communicating with me. Oh, I apologize. Oh, no, 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 cancel that. And then kind of flipping it and asking staff members, my students and/or their families have been responsive to my ongoing communications about what is happening and what is expected. It's about 82% of the staff agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. Okay, so again, you'll see a fairly high degree of convergence. Okay, so we also add, asked a bunch of questions about engagement and how well students were engaging in the schedule, in the work and so on. So a real simple question, the school's remote learning schedule is manageable for my students? So you could see about 84% of parents agreed or strongly agreed with the statement. And then kids, kind of an interesting one. And again, we're talking about secondary level students. It was a little bit lower. It's about 68% of students agreed or strongly agreed with the statement. And some of the students in the comment section talked about that they thought nine o'clock was too early to start classes. I'll save commentary for later. And then for staff members, the school's remote learning schedule that has been adopted is manageable for me. You can see it's about 85% of staff agree or strongly agree with that statement. Then of our parents, my child has been attending his or her live learning sessions. 96% parents agree. And then of our students, I have been attending my students' live virtual learning sessions. It's about 95% agreed or strongly disagree, agree rather. So then we asked the teachers, and again, I think we could have a conversation about, do the 330 students, are they necessarily a representative sample of all of our students? And again, some of the commentary seemed to indicate that a lot of the students might have been AP or honors level students, you know, students that were highly academically motivated. You know, they checked their email. So this question says, in a typical live learning session, this percentage of my students have been attending. If you look at the purple part of that, it's about 61%. I have a notation removing the, the light blue part of that pie, that 12%, because that refers to not applicable. So keep in mind that we asked all staff members to take the survey. And some of them were folks like counselors, school nurses and so on, that aren't in charge of specific classes. So if you remove that out, it becomes about 70% of our staff is saying that the kids are showing up about 80 to 100% of, 80 to 100% of students are showing up for any given live learning session. So then, kind of an interesting question, my child has been accessing his or her teachers for extra help or to answer questions during virtual office hours. It comes out to be just about exactly 50% say that they agree or strongly agree that they're coming for office hours. And again, it's almost identical, 48% of students agree or strongly agree with that statement. So as far as expectations for work and work assigned, parents, I find that the amount of work that my child is assigned is just right or manageable is about 72%. And I do find it kind of interesting, if you look, those other two pie slices, too little, too much, they're almost equal. And again, we found in the commentary, it wasn't in the majority, but some of these polar extremes of saying, oh, you know, my child and I were just overwhelmed. And then the opposite, my kid needs more work and my kid needs to be challenged more. So it's kind of an interesting phenomenon. And then our students, 56% of them are saying it's just right, it's manageable. And then in red, 42% roughly are saying it's too much. You notice that there's only that tiny blue slice saying there's too little work. So again, this is kind of interesting. It varies from what the parents are saying, but again, it's also largely a teenager's perspective as well. Then our, our teachers had a little bit of variation on this question. My students are engaging in the work and the lessons that I've been providing. Again, it's pretty high, it's about 87% of our staff strongly agree with this statement. So it's pretty high. So then, you know, if we recall over the last couple of meetings, we've talked about in designing a remote learning plan, how long should students be engaging in work? And what should a remote learning day look like? So parents were asked, my child is spending the following amount of time on schoolwork daily, including the online live sessions with teachers. And you could see the biggest chunk there is two to three hours, about a third, 33.5%. And then the second chunk, largest chunk is three to four hours, 27.7%, three to four hours. And if you recall from the commissioner's guideline, you should be shooting for something in the ballpark of around three hours worth of work and engagement time during the course of the day. So you can see, we're kind of on target. We're in the process of disaggregating this data by schools. You would expect probably at the high school would be a little bit more involved. And, you know, at the elementary grades, particularly early childhood K through two, it would be a little bit less. So again, the same exact questions to students. And again, it's, it leans a little bit more strongly towards the three to four and four to five. But again, it's still in that two to, two to five range. If you look at the yellow, the green and the purple. So again, in the whole, it looks like, you know, we're meeting some of our targets. Then parents were also asked, given the circumstances, my child's teacher and/or support staff are providing an appropriate amount of direct instruction and support so my child can independently complete assignments. 75% of parents agree or strongly agree with this statement. And then again, pretty close correlation with our students where it's the same exact statement and it's about 73% of our students are agreeing or strongly agreeing. So then we, we asked kind of a, a parallel question, but with a different take to our staff. Of the work that I've been assigning, I have been receiving this amount back from students. So again, in this two week span, what percentage are you getting back from students? So at face value, if you look at purple, 40% of teachers are saying, eh, I'm getting about 80 to 100% back from students. Again, this is a phenomenon where that light blue that's at 15.4%, the not applicable, has to be removed. So if you remove that, it becomes about 50% of teachers are getting 80 to 100% of their work back from the students. And kind of the interesting phenomenon, and we'll be able to dig a little bit deeper in the disaggregation, we're actually finding more issues with that at the elementary level versus the secondary level for the simple reason that elementary students, through the, a lot of this that we're trying to accomplish online, are highly dependent on their parents and highly dependent upon their parents' schedules and managing the technology and so on. And then kind of another interesting question that again, was very much driven by some of our elementary teachers that wanted some of this data. Overall, the quality of work that I've been receiving from students since we started remote learning, again, pulling out the NA, it's about 70% say it's of equal or greater quality that they would typically expect. And then, as we talked about last meeting, as far as going to a system where we're not grading, and again, for specific assignments, we're giving credit or no credit. I understand what quality of work must be for our student to receive credit for a remote learning assignment. It's about 73% of student, of parents rather, agree or strongly agree. And again, close correlation with our students where it was 71% agree or strongly agree. So then we had a couple kind of open ended questions, kind of short, fill in the box around, how can we improve the program and what type of training or what type of support would be useful? So we asked, it would be helpful if the district could provide some training or support in these areas to help manage remote learning. So basically about half of our parents responded to this. These are the top four. And I don't think that there's anything that's really earth shaking. The number one response was managing screen time. Then secondly, how to obtain extra help for your student? How can we get some tech support with the various apps? And then concerns around student safety with video conferencing. A kind of a parallel question to our teachers, you know, what type of support or just type of professional development would they be interested in? And again, you can see things like, how do I make my lessons more engaging? How do I convert lessons that I already been using and making them strictly virtual? What are some of the different apps or emergent technologies that I could use to promote asynchronous learning? And the SEL piece as well. So then last but not least is the, you know, text box. And that was not a mandatory question. So again, we got about half of the parents responded. And it, it, it's difficult to go through 627 comments, but I, I, I think some general themes emerged. And no word of a lie, I want to say at least half of the commentary was just super, super positive. It was a lot of appreciation, a lot of praise for our teachers, for administrators, for our staff, for just kind of ongoing support and communication in a really, really challenging situation and being thoughtful about the approach. So that's much appreciated. I think we saw some commentary around ongoing concerns about the efficacy of providing ongoing supports and accommodations strictly in a virtual environment, you know, for parents that have children with either IEPs or 504s. One that came through pretty strongly was if the district could have the ability to streamline communication, to streamline the number of different apps that teachers might be using. You know, some, some parents talked about, okay, it's Monday morning and I'm going to get, you know, 11 different Google Classroom notifications or I'm going to get a whole slew of emails and so on. As I talked about, I, it, when you go through all these comments, again, you see this real dichotomy. And I think a lot of it is dependent upon the situation in the home. You know, we had some parents who said, we're overwhelmed, we're both essential workers. We can't keep up with the number of Zoom sessions, it's just too much. And then we've had some parents who said, why can't the teachers just have the normal schedule that they usually have, except do it online on Zoom? My kid needs more attention on Zoom, more live sessions. So we saw some of that, saw some frustrations. And again, I think a lot of this was with our younger students, the stress of trying to balance schedules, particularly if you have parents working in the home, telecommuting, so to speak, and they have multiple children that are at the elementary or elementary and middle level, how challenging the balancing the schedule was. Did have some parents, and again, I think it was just, I can say the word statistically significant, probably in the ballpark of 12 to 15, who wanted more work for their students and more assignments for their students. As far as our students, overall, I think there was general satisfaction. One of their requests was more consistency in due dates for assignments and having a fair amount of warning. Some of them, and again, it wasn't a majority, but a statistically significant said that they were getting too much work. And then some noted that there was inconsistency in the quality of Zoom sessions where they specifically talked about some teachers being very, very adept with technology and being able to integrate it pretty smoothly into a Zoom session whereas others, not so much. And it was just kind of a Zoom session that was just still kind of a lot of chalk and talk, except it was done in the context of Zoom. And then our staff, again, generally positive commentary, generally commentary about that it's a manageable schedule for them to meet some of the challenges. Was some commentary about the Misco schedule. And while it's great to see your students a couple of times a week, just the logistical challenges of having many students in a Zoom room was a challenge. A lot of them had commentary about really ensuring that appropriate planning would occur, again, to meet those power standards, but to ensure that there's consistency across grade levels and across common courses. Teachers also talked about, how can we streamline communications? Potentially just having one uniform platform to be able to get, you know, one message out to parents. And then from some of our high school teachers, particularly, concerns about potential, potential engagement that, and it's kind of interesting. My wife is a sixth grade coding teacher, and I hear this every single day, where you have students check into a Zoom session and they, they're muted, but they also turn off, they also turn off the camera. So as a result, yes, you might see Johnny's name and they're present, but you know, unless you've got something that's very dynamic and very engaging and very interactive, there's some question about, well, how is this student actually even physically present, let alone engaging? So that's what we have after, you know, a, a quick, but I think useful surveying of our three stakeholders. Like I said, our next step within the next 24 to 48 is we're going to disaggregate it. Like I said, our next step within the next 24 to 48 is we're going to disaggregate it by school. And I'm asking the building principals to in turn during their staff meetings and grade level meetings and so on, to share it with the staff to further tweak what we're doing. It's our intention to do this on an ongoing basis. This isn't just, hey, we did this after two weeks and that's it. We want to make this dynamic because as we said last time, we need to remain cognizant that this program is new. We've got to stay flexible and we have to adapt based upon what meets the needs of our students and what meets the needs of our families. So I know that's a lot in a relatively short period of time, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
I mean, just a comment, it's, I think it's impressive, not only that we're getting positive feedback, but also we're getting reinforcement from, from the, between the teachers and the students.
Yeah.
And then also seeing similar reactions from the parents. That tells us that, that's, that we're getting real data from all the constituents. So that part's really positive. There's, I know that when I, when I was talking to parents that were having issues, I think you hit the nail on the head, that it was more of the elementary students who were, who were having trouble with the online learning experience and the parents of the elementary students who were, who are having serious issues managing the family and managing how they would, how they would do that for the day. So, you know, one of the comments that I heard was, we have just now started getting into the rhythm of things and then we're going to take April break and it, it kind of screws us all up. So probably for the next week or so, the families that were having struggles before vacation are probably having them for the next few days. So I, I hope we're aware of that and we're, we're trying to take steps.
Yeah, we're very cognizant of it. We, I believe, including this week, we have seven more weeks of this. I'm going to be really honest and not to be, maybe it's my turn to, Jay was the half, glass half full guy today. And I'm the glass half empty guy today. I guess we're switching roles. But I think we very much have to be prepared that remote learning may be in our future in September. Or at some point during the 2021 school year. Some of the things being proposed would be, would we, upon returning in September, possibly be looking at some type of hybrid model where not all the students would be in the school at one time? And as a result, you know, we'd still have to do remote learning, but also combine some face-to-face learning. I'm sure you've seen some of the accounts in the press around, you know, what if there's a second wave and we're going to have to go back into this period of quarantine at some point in the fall or the winter? So again, it underscores the need that, no, we're still not, you know, the University of Phoenix, we're not an online operation. But this is something that we have to take seriously and we have to continue to build our repertoire of good practices to meet the needs of our students and our families. So it's something that we take extremely seriously and will continue to adapt as time goes on.
Joe, given that there was like a fairly large discrepancy between the students and the parents in terms of like how many of them said it was too much work, you read like 41 and a half percent of students saying there was too much work assigned versus 13 and a half percent of parents. I'd be kind of curious to see once it's broken down by school, how much of that is, right? Because your student responses are only coming from the secondary level, whereas the parent response is everybody. So I don't know if that accounts for some of that, but that would be kind of interesting to find out.
Yeah.
That's a lot, that's a big number saying it's too much, so.
Yeah, and I'll be more than happy to, once we've got those disaggregated by school and by level, I'd be happy to share those with you. Again, I think some of our concerns around engagement are concerns around work and so on. They've been a little heavier at the elementary level. I mean, it's kind of reverse of what you see traditionally, you know, some of our parent feedback, particularly from the older students was glowing. I mean, I think it was glowing across all levels. But I think the fact that a typical middle school and definitely high school kid can be a lot more autonomous and function with their schedule and they can manage the technology leads it to be a lot more manageable and less stressful at that level versus, you know, if you've got a kindergartner and a third grader at home and you're trying to manage that schedule and trying to manage, you know, communicating with the teacher and getting the kids up and running. I understand the stress with that. I really do.
Just a quick question. One of the comments in the student feedback was about more consistency in the due date. So my understanding was all the work is being assigned on Monday and due on Friday. So I wasn't quite clear on what the, what the feedback or what the concern was there.
I think there, there's been a couple cases where we've had teachers do something like, and again, I think this might've been a situation with an AP class. And I think, I think some of our AP teachers, I had one student who I actually know quite well, who's a graduating senior, who was literally the first person to respond to the survey. And she shot me an email and she said, you know, Dr. Adam, you only put a 500-word limit. Here, I'm going to, or 500-character limit. Here, I'm going to tell you the real deal. And it was the type of situation, it was one of the AP classes where there were, it was kind of like, well, we're going to have a quiz tomorrow because we, you really, really are going to need this for the tests and so on. So I think we've had some instances where some of our teachers have given some more short-term assignments that have been due the next day or something like that. So I think some of that commentary came out of that.
Got it. Thank you.
No, I was, I was just thinking as we were going through this in September, you know, we will face a big problem similar to, to what we have today with the elementary folks. I'm wondering if there's any way to, to take advantage of the fact that some of the high school seniors are going to not, I mean, there may be delays within their school year as well. So there may be some way to utilize their time for mentorship.
I think it's a distinct possibility.
But that's, I have no idea whether that'll actually work.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a different, slightly different question? So first off, I think the feedback, I think is, I think I kind of expect it in terms of hearing from different parents and also seeing, you know, when you move things online, they're traditionally delivered in a live presentation set. And, you know, we've, we're asking a lot of our teachers and our educators to kind of go through shifting everything they're doing. So, you know, the bumps in the road and smoothing it out and all those kinds of things, totally get. But what are we doing? I mean, you're talking about September and others. Are, are we doing any other scenario planning in terms of what does it look like? If we have to go back and we've got to do something maybe on a hybrid level or we go back fully? Or, you know, are we doing any of that planning in terms of what do we have to do now to get the schools ready? In terms of being able to go back? I mean, it, I mean, clearly online would be what this is in what we're doing. I mean, probably I would imagine you'd do some professional development over the summertime and how to improve the online learning experience at different levels. You take the lessons learned of all the various different pieces and do that. But I guess my question is, what are we doing also too about the potential of going back fully live? You know, at the beginning of, you know, the September school year.
So it's a great question, and I think you're opening up an enormous can of worms. Not that you would ever do that, Phil. But some of the pieces, we do not yet have guidance from Desi or from the commissioner. But myself and Maureen have had the opportunity, almost on a weekly, sometimes twice a week basis, to have Zoom sessions with the Commissioner O'Reilly. And some of the pieces that have been bandied about have been based upon some of the European schools that have started to kind of dip their toe in going back, having full social distancing. And I think we could be looking at something conceivably that's radically different with regard to scenarios where, again, you would not have all of your students in the school at any one given point in time. Potentially at any point in time, you would have a third, possibly a half of students in the building. You would probably in a classroom be looking at removing half of the desks. And again, keeping that six-foot parameter. All students, all staff members wearing masks, having appropriate sanitary measures in place vis a vis, you know, hand washing stations, vis a vis gel. Another idea that I heard bandied around of, is having random temperature checks as students enter the building. So I think those are some of the ideas being bandied about at this point in time. I think we are still waiting to see what happens over the next two weeks, then four weeks and six weeks with regard to guidance from the governor and the game plan as far as reopening the state. And I think those pieces around reopening the state are going to drive what public education is going to look like. So I think right now those pieces are still super formative. But I think it's a reality that we are going to have to prepare ourselves for September.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that. But I also think it's important to make sure we're getting the message out clearly that we're looking at all alternatives and that it's not just one thing or the other. I mean, I know, for example, you know, you have a number of colleges that I agree are looking at everything from potentially not having school in the fall semester.
Yeah.
Going back fully and normally. But the going back fully and normally part is actually not clearly being communicated. So you're, you're getting a lot of people that are just jumping to the conclusion. I think there's a lot of still unknowns.
Yeah.
We have time, we have other pieces. I mean, you look in other countries, you deal with other places and schools and things like that. You see what's, what's happening in different environments. You know, there are other places that are starting to return, I call it, to the new normal. The question is, what, how do we define the new normal for ourselves?
What does it look like? Yeah. And, and I think there's going to be some significant challenges, you know. For lack of a better term, you know, when Commissioner O'Reilly was discussing these things, he was discussing them in a very professional manner, but there was a certain element of it that was almost kind of amusing. Not amusing, M-U-S-I, not amusing like ha ha. That, you know, instantaneously in this massive chat box, a bunch of superintendents started feverishly typing of press back of saying, wait a minute, how could you ever do that? How would that work with regard to daycare? And how could we manage schedules? And what about parents that would still be petrified to return their children? And what about, you know, medically compromised employees and so on? So there's a lot of considerations that are going to have to be considered should we enter, you know, again, this new type of normal upon returning. But I, I personally think based upon where we are right now and, you know, I can't see us being in a situation where we return in September and it's like a typical first day of school and it's a typical, you know, same old, same old, without some degree of social distancing measures that are going to have to be, become part of our new normal.
No, I understand. I think it's a, it's just an item. I think we probably need to make sure we're looking at at various different stages of potential scenario levels based on what might be guidance or I'll call it lack of guidance.
Correct.
Going to get. And so my, my point is, we can sit around and wait, or we can at least do some of our own scenario. Understand if so, we're that much further ahead of the game.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I view it, again, not to be self-serving for our district, but I think our approach to remote learning has been fairly deliberate and fairly thoughtful. And I've talked to some colleagues, I've talked to parents who live in different districts and in some places, it's been a little chaotic. And, you know, between a district having a significant digital divide or kind of a lack of guidance for teachers, lack of coherency in approach and so on. So I'm fully confident that we will have, you know, a very thoughtful systematic approach to what our return will look like.
Great.
Okay. So Joe, you have an introduction to make.
I do, I do. And I do wish we were in the old normal, so to speak. Because I am really, really thrilled and delighted to introduce all of you to Wendy Bell, who is somewhere in this Zoom room.
I'm next to you on my screen.
There you are. You're front and center now. Wendy, effective July 1st, will be the new principal of Memorial Elementary School, filling Deb's very, very large shoes. But Wendy comes to us as, currently she is the principal of the Walter, Walter Patton Elementary School in Shrewsbury. She has spent the last 20 years of her very distinguished career there. 13 as a classroom teacher and the last seven as a principal. I've had the opportunity to interview her now at least two or three times. We had an outstanding search committee that Maureen Cohen headed up that had memorial teachers, memorial parents, some district administrators. They did an exemplary job. I think I said as in my background notes, you know, we had a very, very strong pool. I think we had something like 34, 35 applicants. And Wendy really rose to the top and she rose to the top for the simple reason that it really, leadership has two sides to it. It has the management side, but then it also has the instructional leadership side. It's almost like two sides of a coin. Wendy is super solid on both of those fronts. And it came very, very clear through the interview process, it very, became very, very clear in touching base with references. I had a very lengthy conversation with her superintendent. So we are absolutely delighted that she is going to be joining us effective July 1st. I know Wendy is chomping at the bit, so to speak, to connect with all of the stakeholders in the memorial community. So I just wanted to take the time to formally welcome her, formally recognize her as our incoming principal and introduce her to you, the school committee. So welcome, Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the warm welcome. I've been really thrilled with the outpouring of emails from all of the staff at Memorial and from the district leadership team. And in particular, Deb Swaim, she and I have been chatting during this meeting. Just kind of unbelievable, the, the time that we're in, in this moment in history. And neither of us, neither her, when she decided she was going to retire, nor me, when I decided I was actually going to submit an application, ever in a million years would have thought we'd be in this position right now. So I'm really grateful that she and I are going to get to work together this spring and through the summer to try to do the best we can for the students at Memorial. So thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
And thanks for all your help, Deb, as well. And thanks for all your help, Deb, as well. All right, let's move on to our community comments. Do we have any community comments? So the process, as we used the last meeting, is to use the raise hand button. And raise hand is, I've been using different, different conferencing tools for the last week, so I forgot where the raise hand button is. But I think it's, it's the, the ellipsis on the top right of your box. I think you're able to raise your hand. Oh, no, that's not right. Yeah, you can use your hand, too. That's good. But just so we can see, does anybody have any questions? I don't see any so far. I see, I see a question from Alicia Bisoli. Can we take her off of mute? Yeah, just take yourself off of mute and then ask the question, please.
Hey, everybody. Just a question about Desi, in terms of their guidance and our initial thinking on like, any changes to summer school programming for kids? I haven't heard it mentioned at all, so I was just curious, particularly for kids that aren't IEPs and go to the summer school program every single year, will it be expanded? Will that be changed at all? Any discussions at this point?
So I think our initial feeling, Alicia, is that we want to keep it intact, as we typically have. I think our, our best case scenario is that we would be able to maintain it, but also to maintain it with social distancing guidelines. I think of all of our programs, because again, we're not talking about a large number of students. It's probably going to be viable. We might have to up the timeline of when exactly is going to occur, but it's our full intention to keep those programs intact.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. So any other questions? So I'm scanning down through, I don't see any with anybody. Hands raised? Going once, going twice? All right, let's move on. Correspondence, do we have any correspondence this week?
We do not.
Any other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting? Anyone? All right, then let's cover future agenda items. There's updates relative to the Mercy fiscal year 21 budget that are going to be presented on May 11th. We'll have, I believe we'll have done a multi-board meeting by then, so we'll have a lot more information in regard to the budget on the next meeting. All right, with that, we're going to roll call to executive session pursuant to the MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exemption Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with the district's labor associations, because doing so in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session, and we will go to a separate Zoom meeting. So with that, thank you, everyone, and we'll see you at the next school committee meeting.
Roll call.
Oh yeah, roll call. Shawn Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Phil Duzette, aye.
Nikki Ludwig, an aye.
And Dorothy, you've got an aye there, right? I think she said aye. We have got, we've got a unanimous yes, I think. All right, we'll see you in the executive session.